I want to thank you all for this invitation, Mr. Sanchez. It's Rock Church. We want to appreciate Danny, Mr. Mayor. Okay? If you bow your heads, let's go ahead and pray. Father, we ask you in the name of Jesus, for the blessing you have given us this afternoon, my Father, we ask you that you bless this meeting today, that we have success, my Father, direct them to the past, Father, wisdom and knowledge, to help our church, to be our city, to have success, and, Father, to prosper, help them to come to the agreements that they have, my Father. And we ask you that you give these men, all these men here, my Father, their wisdom, their knowledge and understanding, and guide them to the path they're supposed to go. I ask you, Lord, that you take them, this city and this whole meeting, Lord, in your presence, in Christ, and we thank you, Lord. Amen.
Destroyed by religious.
Religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, from all of you, we're glad to have you here in our meeting tonight, and try to get through our agenda as quickly as we can. I'm going to skip around a little bit, but we'll begin with the middle of public events and events.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The upcoming events that we have include, looking ahead to June 14th, will be the next Blues on the Hill at McKelvey Park. You'll note that they're going to have Blues Music Awards winner, Ms. Greenleaf will be there, amongst some other special guests, so that'll be another one of the wonderful series. Free admission, of course, for the public, so we hope that'll be an excellent opportunity for everyone to enjoy some culture and music. Also, in June, we'll have a Day in the Park, which is free to the public. It's an excellent opportunity for families and their youngsters to get together to plan what they're going to do for the summer. There'll be reading stations, games, food, crafts. It's not just physical activities that we want the youth to be involved with, but also some academics. So, from 10:30 to 1:30 at Fair Park on that Thursday, there'll be some groups and organizations there to help families plan their summer activities. Is that going to go? This coming Monday will be Memorial Day. The City of Harlingen will have a special ceremony starting at 11 o'clock at the Veterans' Memorial Park, which is in Pendleton Park, right off Morgan Boulevard. Our Harlingen police will be basically leading a great deal of that ceremony, so we invite the public to attend. I should also note that all of our non-emergency city offices will be closed for the holiday And this Saturday, in time for spring cleaning, because summer doesn't officially start till later in June, there'll be the city's community-wide trash-off day from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. out at the soccer complex on East Harrison. And there are a few specifications for it, but as long as you're living inside the city limits and can provide your current water bill and valid identification, you're welcome to bring discarded furniture, appliances, a limited four tires, and electronics. And I know the code enforcement office has got several community organizations lined up as volunteers to help out with unloading and things, so if you've got a car or truck and a trailer, you're in business on Saturday. So, we invite the public to help clean up the community by helping them clean up their own property. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dave. I'd like to skip over to item seven. My intention, that's to consider taking action about the resolution, updating the HHS Harlingen Hospital, Company of Texas Enterprise, Project Pursuit to Texas Enterprise Act, Chapter 23 of the Texas Government Code. Staff is not quite ready on this item, but it is time-sensitive, and we have to pass it on by June the 2nd. Would the Commission be able to... Staff would like a little more time to review it. Two options are, we could pass it subject to their reviews tonight, or we could have a special meeting next week, like Tuesday or Wednesday at noon. I just want to make sure we can get a quorum. Can I get... Can we get a quorum Tuesday or Wednesday? Are you here? Are you all here? All right. Then let's pass this item for further consideration by the staff tonight, and if you would just post it for Tuesday at noon. We'll take it. Are we going to get the information by then? Do it Wednesday. Do it Wednesday. Wednesday at noon. Okay? All right. Thank you. Item... Go back to item two, presentation of certificates of recognition to city employees for excellent customer service and assistance with Pan American Golf Association during their winter meeting golf tournament on any other golf courses.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Manager added this item on the agenda. The Pan American Golf Association had their annual tournament out of Tony Butler. The staff did a wonderful job getting the golf course ready for the tournament. There was many compliments, and we wanted to recognize some of the staff. I believe Eddie Medman, our golf professional, is here, and I believe the staff is here as well. And Mr. Sanchez wanted to step up there if you want. I think he's got his time. And first certificate of recognition is for Felix Boteo Martinez. This is for you, sir. Thank you so much. Zieg Donnich.
Thank you, sir.
Fred Valle. Great, thank you, sir. Victor Moreno. Can I get Dave Sanz? Oh, he's in the... He's in the... Well, I'll give this to you. Dave Bowder is our ground superintendent, does a great job of getting everything ready. We want to thank Eddie. Eddie does a great job of getting the staff in order and getting the golf course ready for play. I played everybody, so we enjoyed it. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. I'm getting these golf courses ready.
The reason that we do this is because it's just what they've been doing for young people. I received some calls from the people that use this for young people. I like that. Thank you, guys. Thank you for helping to do this for our city.
Yeah. This is an event that brought in, I think you all heard about it before, but this is an event that brought in over 300 participants from all over the state, Oklahoma and other states.
It was all over the country.
They spent...
It was all over the country.
All over the country. And they spent three or four days here, some of them as long as a week, and received a very nice letter from the President of the Pan American Golf Association. They... These visitors probably spent over $200,000, more than $200,000, $250,000 in our community because of lodging and meals and everything that went on with this important event. And they were delighted with everything that the City Department did for them. And thank you, guys, for making their stay here enjoyable, because they're going to come back. They'll come back because of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, item three, the Brooklyn Suite, 2014, Dixie Road Street and First Street.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the City Manager added this to the agenda. It was in District 1, Commissioner Castillo's district. It was on May 10th. You see the MMA folks there picking up, like they always do, helping out with picking up the debris from different residents. A total of 2.58 tons of debris was picked up on that day. That's a lot of debris. And over 69 tires, I should say, were removed. We want to thank all the volunteers. They did a wonderful job. It was from First Street, from Mass to Linda Street. And I'll tell you, it's a lot of hard work, and they're doing a great job. I used to do that. Put my back to it. So, we want to thank the MMA and all the cadets. Is this the next one? June 14th, on Dixon Avenue Road, from Malami Court to Topaz. You want to invite everybody to come out and help us out? We can use all the help we can get.
These are important events for our community to keep on the radar. All right, go to the approval of item seven, 2014, regular meeting events. Are there any additions or corrections to the events? Are there now some motion to approve the events? Is presented.
So, this second.
All those favor say aye. I suppose like signed, motion carries. Consent agenda items five A, B, and C. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda of five A, B, and C?
I'll second that.
All those favor say aye. I suppose like signed, motion carries. Item six, consider taking action to approve their local agreement with the wrong department. NBHC ISD for donation of one surplus K-9 police vehicle to be used for the schools. Schools K-9. Is it okay if we don't add the K-9 unit to the school?
I would agree with you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion and approve the staff's recommendation.
I just want to say anything. Go ahead, if you have something.
No, I just... Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, in case you had any questions. I was here.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Sounds like a good idea to me. All those favor say aye. I suppose like signed, motion carries. Okay. Thank you. All right. Skip to item seven, to be placed on a special meeting next Wednesday. Item eight is considered an action to approve an ordinance on first reading of amendment chapter 92 of Health Regulations in Hospitals. This is actually a second reading of Health Regulations.
No, Mayor, I'm going to cover that in just a minute.
Health Regulations in Hospitals of Harlingen City Code, providing the safest laws, providing the safety laws in order to any other matters where the law is required.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, this item was brought to the City Council on April 16th for the first reading to amend chapter 92 of the Health Regulations in Hospitals. Due to the number of changes that the Council wanted to make on the agenda, our attorney, Alan Ozuna, who was the council that we went to for this matter, felt more comfortable that we bring it back as a first reading. So, tonight, we're bringing it to you as a first reading of the ordinance, given the degree of changes that were made to the original ordinance. What I'd like to do is cover what the existing ordinance regulates, and then go into what the proposed changes will be for the ordinance. The original ordinance was adopted March 23rd, 2005. It was amended in June to define a bar, and then later amended in September to allow smoking and bingo, and prohibit anyone under the age of 18 years of age from being present. And these are the areas that smoking is currently regulated. Retail stores, food establishments, buses, bus terminals, taxi cabs, airports, all public transit, bowling places, all areas available to and customarily used by the general public such as elevators, restrooms, lobbies, reception areas, hallways, service lines, enclosed and outdoor sports arenas, bowling facilities, wards and semi-private rooms of health facilities, including hospitals, doctors, and dentist's office, hotels and motels, galleries, libraries, museums, facilities used to exhibit motion pictures, drama lectures, and musical recitals, school buildings also, and any room under the control of the Council, Commission, or agency of the city, or any political subdivision. Now, these again are areas that smoking is currently regulated. In all common areas, hallways and lobbies, in apartment buildings, condominiums, trailer parks, retirement facilities, nursing homes, and multi-unit residential facilities. So, again, these are areas where smoking is currently regulated. Now, these are the proposed amendments to the ordinance that we are proposing tonight. The first thing we did was we redefined what smoking is. Defined to include inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted or heated cigar, cigarette, or pipe, or any other lighted or heated tobacco or plant product intended for inhalation, and includes the use of an e-cigarette, which creates a vapor in any manner or form. We also went in and created a definition for e-cigarette, because it wasn't anywhere in the ordinance. And we defined it as any electronic oral device composed of a heating element, battery and/or electronic circuit which provides a vapor of nicotine, or any other substance, and the use or inhalation simulates smoking. Also includes the use of an e-pipe or an e-cigarette. Now, these are the areas where we are proposing to amend the ordinance to prohibit smoking. These are areas in enclosed public places. Private clubs will be regulated now, when they're being used for a function to which the general public is invited. In other words, if you have a private club, and it's only open to its members that particular day, then you can smoke all you want to. The minute you have an event that the general public is invited to that event, then it becomes non-smoking. Bars will be regulated, and then any enclosed area of places of employment, without exception, will be regulated as well. Shopping malls, indoor flea markets, childcare and adult care facilities. These are all enclosed areas that will be regulated. Now, these are areas where we want to regulate smoking in outdoor areas, within a distance of 10 feet from outside entrances, operable windows, and ventilation systems of enclosed areas where smoking is permitted. In other words, I'm sorry, prohibited. In other words, if you have a facility that you cannot smoke in, you will not be able to smoke within 10 feet of an outdoor window or ventilation system. That's just to prevent the air from carrying tobacco smoke into the facility. Playgrounds will be added, parks, stadiums, amphitheaters, bleachers, and grandstands for use by spectators at sporting and other public events. Outdoor public transit waiting areas. We had quite a few bus shelters that were constructed by the city, so we're going to prohibit smoking there. Outdoor common areas of nursing homes, except in designated smoking areas, which must be located at least 10 feet from outside entrances, windows, and ventilation systems, and outdoor flea markets. These are the exemptions to the ordinance. Private residence, obviously, will not be regulated unless used by the residence as a childcare, adult daycare, or healthcare facility. Not more than 25% of hotel and hotel rooms rented to guests can be designated as smoking rooms, but the ordinance does say that all these rooms must be contiguous, and the smoke from smoking rooms cannot infiltrate into rooms that are non-smoking. Private clubs will be exempt, except when being used for events held in the facility to which the general public is invited, provided that smoke from areas in which the smoke is permitted does not infiltrate into areas where smoking is prohibited. Any questions to that particular?
I got a question. It is not fair that some of those private clubs, they can smoke, right?
Yes, it will be able to, yes. Unless you...
What private clubs?
Well, private clubs, for instance, like the Elks Lodge, Veterans of the Forest War, American Legion, those are private clubs.
The dog races?
I'm sorry?
The dog races?
Well, we talk about the Valley Race Park later in the ordinance, so...
I don't see it. I think we violation the rights to the serience, because that's not right. If we're going to be fair, I'm against smoking. I don't want to... I don't smoke, and I don't want nobody to smoke, but we cannot tell the people what they can do. I think we've got enough regulations, so we're going to see. But the regulation domain, I don't think is fair. Because the bars, we got it over there on the Spanish people, they're going to be hurt. Why make it that... That's indiscriminative. That's discrimination against the speaking.
Commissioner, we're just making a presentation. It'll be up to the Commission to decide what to approve and what not to approve, so that'll come later, when you have the discussion and the vote for the item. But if I could continue...
Let's let Mr. Gonzalez get through the presentation. Go ahead. Please proceed.
Valley Race Park will be exempt from smoking, from the smoking ordinance. Retail tobacco stores and/or retail e-cigarette stores will also be exempt. Golf courses between the tee of the first hole and the green from the final hole, these are the only areas in any golf course where you'll be allowed to smoke, whether you walk or on a golf cart. Outdoor seating in restaurants, bars, private clubs, and Valley Race Park, provided that smoking will not be permitted within 10 feet of the entrances, operable windows, or ventilation systems. We also added a section of prohibition related to minors. State statutes right now do not regulate e-cigarettes, so we included a section in our ordinance that the sale of e-cigarettes to any person under the age of 18 is prohibited in the city, along with the possession of an e-cigarette by any person under the age of 18 is also prohibited in the city. Now, there is a sunset provision in the ordinance. On January 1st, 2016, smoking indoors will be prohibited in all private clubs and Valley Race Park. That essentially gives them about 18 months to have smoke in those areas. What we did was, because of this sunset provision, we made sure that we included Valley Race Park and private clubs, that they would be allowed to smoke outdoors, so long as they're not within 10 feet of any entrance, operable window, or ventilation systems.
Any questions?
Yes.
That one item there, as far as... What was... I'm curious, what's the thought process as far as that timeframe between now and when that exemption goes away?
Well, one of the things that we did, Commissioner, was we had Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Warner were part of the committee that met to review the ordinance and the upcoming changes, and that was a date that, as a group, we came up with. There was no magic date. We just picked one into the future that we would sunset, and that's just the date that came up.
But another question still stands, of course. What's the reason behind?
I can maybe answer that. Some of these, those particular establishments are going to possibly require some sort of modification, or maybe remodeling, or doing the layout a little differently in order to accommodate that. For example, Valley Race Park has a non-smoking area right now. The only problem is you have to walk through about 200 feet of smoking area to get to their non-smoking area. So, in order to allow these establishments that have been grandfathered before, and grandfathered in a lot of other cities, time to make that adjustment, it's not time to mount a big defense and come back and come back on January the first, 2016. It's time that we felt like we needed to grant them in order to let them come into compliance, because they may have to do some things to rearrange the way they're doing it.
And one other thing is, we wanted a date that was significant, rather than doing it September the 1st, or... And so, we agreed that the first of the year would be a good date to do, and this first of the year coming, 2015, is probably not enough time to react. And that's it. So, that's why it's 18 months out there. If not, it probably would have been 12.
It's not magic, or it's just sort of an agreed...
We had thought about making it June 1st of next year, and we just thought about it and said, you know what? It's just easier to make it.
Why wouldn't we don't give it the same to everybody the next year, or 16, 19, 16, 2016, or something like that? Why? Why cut some people like that?
I can maybe... The private club part of it is because they're private clubs, and they're nonprofit clubs. And like I said, they've been exempt before. And then Valley Race Park is a gambling facility, so that's what the distinction between whether that's right or wrong, that's the distinction that those three facilities basically have three or four in the city.
I think the city don't have the label, authorization to control the private...
Okay. You'll get it... Everybody will get an opportunity to speak, you know, speak how you feel about the ordinance, but I would like to hear and agree. Are you finished, or are you... That's the order?
No, Mayor, I think that's it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, bars were exempt before?
Bars are exempt right now.
Okay, they're exempt now?
Yes.
So, smoking is prohibited in bars in the city, part of the...
No, smoking is allowed in a bar right now. We're going to...
All bars?
If you're a bar, you can smoke, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, if this ordinance is passed as presented, then smoking will be prohibited in all bars. Private clubs will be exempt to a certain degree if they comply with the provision of not inviting the public, and then Valley Race Park will also be exempt.
And is smoking now prohibited in hotels?
Yes, it is, completely.
Okay, and this would say you could do 25%?
25%, yes.
Okay. But my experience traveling the country is the smoking is prohibited by the chain or the hotel itself, because there's insurance costs involved.
That's exactly true. Most hotels will not allow you to smoke in there, and if you do, they usually have signs saying that they're going to charge you $300 or $200...
And $500 and all that.
...to clean it up. So, that's been pretty much taken care of itself. Most national chains won't allow you to smoke in there anyway, so... That's the presentation we're going to...
I think one thing we need to address, I think Mike's question, is on 9216, no, 9215, basically says that if I decide that I don't want to have my establishment non-smoking, or as I have today, if I have a bar, and I don't want smoking in my bar, I can do that. So, 9215 says any place that we've said that you cannot smoke in, but is exempt. Let's say a club, the veterans of the war decide tomorrow they don't want to allow smoking in there. This provision allows them to say, you know, we don't care what the city says, there's no smoking in here. Even though we're exempt, we can say that we're not going to... We're going to declare ourselves non-exempt. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but can't the business today put up a non-smoking sign?
Yes, that's what that means.
And say, you don't... No smoking is allowed. I mean, they could do that, the freedom as a business owner could do that.
Right.
Does that need to be legally addressed?
Well, one thing, Commissioner, first, is we're going to allow smoking in tobacco shops, and you may have one person who opens up a tobacco shop, says, you're not going to smoke in here. So, they'll make it non-smoking. So, that just gives them the right to do that.
All right.
That's my presentation. I want to see any questions.
Before we start to take any action and deliberate, I would like to give anybody who wants to speak for or against the ordinance an opportunity to do so. And the way we're going to do that is we're going to have a... I'll give up to 15 minutes per side. We'll start with that. If we need more time, maybe we'll take it, but we'll start with 15 minutes. Anybody who's... Those who are in favor of the ordinance can come up and speak, and those for 15 minutes. Those who are opposed to the ordinance, or a portion of the ordinance, can come up and speak. We'll block them 15 minutes.
Per person?
No. Per side. The debate will last 30 minutes. If you have a principal spokesperson, they can have... You know, you say, I want... That person can have five minutes, or that one person can have five minutes. So, put your first...
Yes, it will be up to you.
What private clubs?
Well, private clubs, for instance, like the Elks Lodge, Veterans of the Foreign War, American Legion, those are private clubs.
The dog races?
I'm sorry?
The dog races do?
Well, we talk about the Valley Race Park later in the ordinance, so...
I don't see it. I think we violation the rights to the seriousness because that's not right. If we're gonna be fair, I'm against smoking. I don't want to, I don't smoke and I don't want nobody to smoke, but we cannot tell the people what they can do. I think we got enough regulations over there in the city, but the regulation domain, I don't think is fair. Because the bars, the bars, we got it over there on the, on the Spanish people, they're gonna be hurt. Why, why making that, that's indiscriminate. That's discrimination against the speaking.
Commissioner, we're just making a presentation. It'll be up to the commission to decide what to approve and what to, what not to approve, so that'll come later when you have the discussion and the vote for the side.
Let's let Mr. Gonzalez get through the presentation. Go ahead.
Valley Race Park will be exempt from smoking, from the smoking ordinance. Retail tobacco stores and/or retail e-cigarette stores will also be exempt. Golf courses between the tee of the first hole and the green from the final hole, these are the only areas in any golf course where you'll be allowed to smoke, whether you walk or on a golf cart. Outdoor seating at restaurants, bars, private clubs, and Valley Race Park, provided that smoking will not be permitted within 10 feet of the entrances, operable windows, or ventilation systems. We also added a section of prohibition related to minors. State statutes right now do not regulate e-cigarettes, so we included a section in our ordinance that, that sale of e-cigarettes to any person under the age of 18 is prohibited in the city, along with the possession of an e-cigarette by any person under the age of 18 is also prohibited in the city. Now, there is a sunset provision in the ordinance. On January 1st, 2016, smoking indoors will be prohibited in all private clubs and Valley Race Park. That essentially gives them about 18 months to have smoke in those areas. What we did was, because of this sunset provision, we allowed, made sure that we included Valley Race Park and private clubs, that they would be allowed to smoke outdoors, so long as they're not within 10 feet of any interest, any entrance, operable window, or ventilation systems.
Any questions?
Yes.
That one item there, as far as, what was, what's, I'm curious, what's the thought process as far as that timeframe between now and when that exemption goes away?
Well, one of the things that, that we did, Commissioner, was we had Commissioner Lee Al, Commissioner Warner were part of the committee that met to review the ordinance and the upcoming changes, and that was, that was a date that, that as a group we came up with. There was no, no magic date. We just picked one into the future that we would sunset, and that's just the date we came up.
But another question still stands, of course. What's the reason behind?
I can maybe answer that. Some of these, of those particular establishments are gonna possibly require some sort of modification, or maybe remodeling, or, or doing the layout a little differently in order to accommodate that. For example, Valley Race Park has a non-smoking area right now. The only problem is, you have to walk through about 200 feet of smoking area to get to their non-smoking area. So, in order to allow these establishments that have been grandfathered before, and are grandfather, grandfather in a lot of other cities, time to make that adjustment, it's not time to mount a big defense and come back and, come back on January the 1st, 2016. It's time that we felt like we needed to grant them in order to let them come into compliance, because they may have to do some things to rearrange the way they're doing it.
And one other thing is, we, we wanted a date that was significant, rather than doing it September the 1st, or, and so we, we agreed that the 1st of the year would be a good date to do, and this 1st of the year coming 2015 is probably not enough time to, to react. And, and that's it. So, that's, that's why it's 18 months out there. If not, it probably would've been 12.
It's not magic, or it's just sort of an agreed?
We had thought about making it June 1st of next year, and we just thought about it and said, you know what? It's just easier to make it.
Why wouldn't, we don't give it the same to everybody, that, to the next year, or 16, 19, 16, 2016, or something like that? Why? Why cut some people like that?
I can maybe, well, the, the private club part of it is, is because they're private clubs, and they're nonprofit clubs, and like I say, they've been exempt before. That's, and then Valley Race Park is a gambling facility, so that's what the distinction between whether that's right or wrong, that's the distinction that those three facilities basically have three or four in the city.
I think the city don't has the label authorization to control the private...
Okay. You'll get, right, everybody will get an opportunity to speak again, you know, speak how you feel about the ordinance, but I would like to hear and grit. Are you finished, or are you, that's the order?
No, Mayor, I, I think that's, that's it.
I have a question.
Yes?
So, bars were exempt before?
Bars are exempt right now.
Okay, they're exempt now?
Yes.
So, so, smoking is prohibited in bars in the city, part of it?
No, smoking is allowed in a bar right now. We're going to-
All bars?
If, if you're a bar, you can smoke, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, if, if this ordinance is passed as presented, then smoking will be prohibited in all bars. Private clubs will be exempt to a certain degree if they comply with the, with the provision of not inviting the public, and then Valley Race Park will also be exempt.
And is smoking now prohibited in hotels?
Yes, it is, completely.
Okay, and this would say you could do 25%?
25%, yes.
Okay. But my experience traveling the country is, the smoking is prohibited by the chain or the hotel itself, because there's insurance costs involved.
That, that's exactly true. Most hotels will not allow you to smoke in there, and if you do, they usually have signs saying that they're gonna charge you $300 or $200.
And $500 bucks and all that.
To clean it up, so, that's, that's been pretty much taken care of itself. Most national chains won't allow you to smoke in there anyway, so. That's the presentation.
I think, I think one thing we need to address, I think Mike's question, is on 9216, no, 9215, basically says that if I, if I decide that I don't want to have my establishment non-smoking, or as I have, today, if I have a bar, and I don't want smoking in my bar, I can do that. So, 9215 says any place that we've said that you cannot smoke in, but is exempt, or it's, let's say, a, a club, veterans of the foreign war decide tomorrow they don't want to allow smoking in there, this provision allows them to say, you know, we don't care what the city says, there's no smoking in here. Even though we're exempt, we can say that we're not gonna, we're gonna declare ourselves non-exempt. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but can't the business, to let put up a non-smoking sign and say-
Yes, that's, that's what that means.
You don't, no smoking is allowed. I mean, they can do that, the freedom as a business owner to do that.
Right.
Does that need to be legally addressed?
Well, one, one thing, Commissioner, first, since we're, we're gonna allow smoking in, in tobacco shops, and you may have one person who opens up a tobacco shop, says, you're not gonna smoke in here. So, they'll make it no, non-smoking. So, that just gives them the right to do that.
All right.
Here, that's my presentation. I'm gonna see any questions.
Before we, before we start to take any action and, and deliberate, I would like to give anybody who wants to speak for or against the ordinance an opportunity to do so. The way we're gonna do that is, we're gonna have a, a gift, up to 15 minutes per side. We'll start with that. If we need more time, maybe we'll take it, but we'll start with 15 minutes. Anybody who's, those who are in favor of the ordinance can come up and speak, and those, for 15 minutes. Those who are opposed to the ordinance, or a portion of the ordinance can come up and speak. We'll block them 15 minutes.
Per person?
No. Per side. The debate will last 30 minutes. If you have a, if you have a principal spokesperson, they can have, you know, you say, I want, that person can have five minutes, or that one person can have five minutes. So, put your first, put your best person up first, and then everybody else gets one minute.
Mayor, before we start, I would just like to acknowledge Commissioner, Commissioner Lee Al. We spent countless hours on this issue, several days, trying to iron out the, the non-smoking ordinance. It wasn't easy. There was a lot of debate amongst ourselves, but we finally came up with a solution that we thought was acceptable to everybody, so.
Yeah, you guys spent a lot of time with these. Why didn't you make it fair?
Okay, well, don't, don't shoot gay. He's just the messenger. He's just, he's just trying to explain what's, what's been proposed. Let's, let's go ahead. Those of you who are in favor of the ordinance, if you'd like to be the principal speaker, and you'd like that person to come forward, they can have up to five minutes, and the rest of you can have up to a minute. So, if you'd like to come forward and begin, if you don't want to be a principal speaker, you don't have to be, but come on up. Please identify yourself, please state where you live, your, your address, and then go ahead.
All right. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak towards your efforts to enhance, strengthen the current smoking ordinance. My name is Belinda Reiniger. I live in Harlingen, Texas, on Arcadia Street. I have the-
Just give us the address.
Oh, 107 Arcadia in Harlingen. I am a public health researcher with 20 years of experience, and I particularly am interested in examining the, the factors that enhance or impact health status. And still today, despite the small number of people who still choose to smoke, the negative health impact of smoking is strong. Tobacco-related deaths are still the leading cause of mortality in the United States. This high rate includes those who suffer the consequences of health impact because of secondhand smoke. I really have two main messages. The first one is, the sky does not fall. And what I mean by that is that there are countless cities across the country, countless cities in the state, and even neighboring cities here in the valley, have passed very strong ordinances, and this mixed drink rates and the overall sales in bars do not fall. I've had the pleasure of looking at that data specifically, and there is no negative impact of these kinds of ordinances on the, the bar sales. My second main message is, the sky immediately gets bluer. And what I mean by that is, health quality immediately is strengthened by the passing of these ordinances. Heart attack rates immediately get lower, because people are not allowed to smoke in public areas. And the air quality in establishments such as the ones you were discussing immediately improves, which is better for the employees who work there. So, there are only positives when I look at this from a public health perspective. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. Next, if you anticipate you're gonna speak, go ahead and step forward quickly so that we can hear you, and, and if you're gonna speak after this gentleman, just go ahead and get, get in line, next person, get in line.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jose Garza, and I work with Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas. We're formerly known as Rural Mountain Valley Council. We're blessed to be housed here out of Cole's Corner off of Tyler Avenue, so 16th and 17th East Tyler. And our work revolves around getting the communities and schools in the Harlingen, San Benito, and greater Cameron County area informed and aware on the dangers of substance use disorders. This includes topics of alcohol and other drugs and tobacco. We confidently and enthusiastically support the item up for approval this day, in the hopes of promoting a healthier environment, free of toxic and lethal consequences of smoking and secondhand smoke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Here I am again. I'm Rachel Gomez. I live in Harlingen, 2810 Sackers Drive. I am a nurse, and I am very disappointed. Brownsville passes an ordinance that is completely smoke-free. And here we are, Harlingen. I'm so proud to live in Harlingen, and this gentleman here is telling me, I'm against smoking, yet you're putting up a big fight to pass it. I am very disappointed. We're Harlingen proud. I'm so proud. And here we are. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor? Please state your name and your, and your address, please.
Berta Cabasos, 27261 Palm Boulevard, Harlingen, Texas. And I'm here just to let you know about the results of the Harlingen Smokebusters surveys that they conducted on two days here in Harlingen with Cameron County residents. They completed 264 surveys, asking the questions, do you smoke tobacco products? And then they also asked one of the important questions is, whether the citizens were interested in a comprehensive smoking ordinances. And out of the 264, 250 agreed that they were interested in the smoking ordinances, in the, in a comprehensive ordinance. And also, if there were 100% smoke-free ban in bars and music clubs, I would go to bars and music clubs more often, less often, or no difference. And 158 said it would make no difference, and 88 said, well, actually, 158 said more often, 88 said no difference, and 18 said less often. So, it was, you know, the results show that even, even the smokers said that they would, you know, it would either make no difference, or they would go more often. So, this is just in, in two days, and it was just a few hours, so those were what I wanted to do.
Are you related to the Berta Cabasos who have a school named after her in San Benito?
No, that's Berta Cabasos.
She was my junior high Spanish teacher, so.
(laughing).
I got the, I got an email from you, I thought.
Oh, okay.
Email me of my junior high Spanish.
No, just with the, or just Smokebusters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, anybody else want to speak for, in favor of the ordinance?
My name is Erlinda Abantau. I'm the stroke coordinator for a hospital here for the past 15 years, and just to share with you that leaving a healthy, a healthy lifestyle doesn't wait. I think 18 months to get, to get Harlingen to be completely smoke-free is something so unreasonable. I think if we need to have a healthy lifestyle to prevent stroke, heart attack, it needs to start right away.
Thank you. Anybody else? Speak in favor of the ordinance? All right, if not, then I'll go to those who would like to speak against the ordinance. Again, if you have a principal speaker, you just identify yourself as the principal speaker and say.
You allow the shop it? I want 285, I promise.
Have you been, are you the principal speaker? You're just gonna speak for a minute?
I wanna speak for a minute, if I'm allowed to.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, this is the worst case of discrimination, when you handpick people who are nonprofit. Then, the easiest way to do it is to get all the bars here in Harlingen to play bingo. Simple. Play bingo, and you're allowed to smoke. And your, your business that you brought into Harlingen to create jobs, to whatever. Okay, I personally don't smoke, so it doesn't really matter to me. I have a choice to go into somebody's establishment to eat or to have a beer. But that is their choice. It is my choice. And here you're slashing the throats of every citizen in Harlingen and every business establishment. You all oughta be ashamed of yourself when you handpick people. That is horrible, okay? It takes ignorance when people smoke. It takes also education. And when you are ignorant and your brain shrinks, then we have a lot of brainless people, and we can stop with the city commission. Thank you.
Your time is up.
Ladies and gentlemen, Stephen Fuyon, 2917, Pinhurst, here in Harlingen. Thank you. I'm not the principal speaker, although I may run over a little bit. I've called every one of you. You all have gotten voicemails from me. Every single person. I'm in agreement with a person's right to choose. I'm sorry, you didn't put up your money. I don't know, the farmer's here in the valley, and God bless him. I'm, you know, I'm a, I'm a farmer fan. But you burn, whatever you burn, and the smoke comes in, I don't, and I, I am a smoker. I don't get the choice to breathe in that stuff. I don't, I still have to go to my pool, and I'm blessed that I have a pool. But I work hard for that. The people that are putting their money up for bars, I'm not suggesting that smoking is good for anyone. It's not up to you to dictate that. We get the right to be stupid.
30 seconds.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to, this young lady that claims that this doesn't impact businesses, she's wrong. You, you and I both know, all of us know, you can put up a survey that says whatever you want it to say. Come on, these people are providing jobs for people that pay taxes in this town. Let Harlingen be a leader. Yes, Brownsville, they don't allow smoking. McAllen doesn't allow smoking, Mr. Mayor. Do you know the people that live in McAllen and live in Brownsville, do you know where they come to enjoy their time? They come here because we still have a freedom of choice. They can go to a bar, enjoy, if they have a meeting, a business meeting, they don't go to Shenanigans in Brownsville or in McAllen. They come to Harlingen. Harlingen is a leader. Please be a leader in letting us all make our own choices.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Raymond Reyes. I live at 706 San Tickle Drive, and I don't wanna take a lot of time, but I'm a business owner. And I have the Foxy Lady here. We've had it here. It's been over here 27 years. I actually smoked for 20 years, was diagnosed with cancer when I was 19, given six months to live, and I'm still here. So, you know, everybody's a little bit different on how they respond to smoking. I do think that as a business owner, you guys really have no right, because you don't pay for my license, you don't pay my property taxes, you don't pay my life bill, my water bill, you don't pay my employees to come in and start telling me or dictating what my customers can and can't do at my bar, which really, if you look at it in a legal standpoint, you might wanna research a little bit of time, and that can save y'all some money. The state actually has been classified as an SOB, not a bar. So, you might wanna rethink, when you start sending the police over there, if you pass the ordinance and start giving my customers tickets. I'd be very careful about that. So, don't try to dictate what I can and cannot do on property I own and I paid for, and I pay my taxes on time. You know, everybody has a choice. They can make that. Don't take that away. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm the principal speaker, and I hope I still have some time. I, my opposition is including electronic cigarettes in the smoking.
If you state your name and where you, and where you live, please.
I'm sorry, Chris. Jimmy Trailer, 55 Los Amigos. I am not protesting the smoking ban, but I am protesting the inclusion of electronic cigarettes. Since smoking bans were introduced to protect bystanders from the harm created by smoke, and since e-cigarettes produce no smoke, I oppose e-cigarettes being included in the ban. Pfizer Pharma has a prescription Nicotrol inhaler, which resembles e-cigarettes, including the production of vapor. This product is planned to be sold commercially by 2015. They recognize that people smoke for the nicotine and die from the smoke. Using a harm reduction product is estimated to be about 95 to 99% safer than smoking. And when you do create this ban, and I wish the electronic cigarettes would be removed from the ban, because they've helped so many people quit smoking. They've saved so many lives. I quit smoking five years ago using electronic cigarettes. And I know of many people have done the same today. The tobacco companies have lost billions in the past five years, which I have no problem with. The estimate is that there are, I think, 5 million people who now use electronic cigarettes, many of whom even quit using electronic cigarettes. One thing I would like to know is, do you all plan to add the Pharma Nicotrol Inhaler when it is released commercially to this ban, the same way that you are banning traditional electronic cigarettes? It will operate the same way, it has the vapor, but it is a pharmaceutical product.
Hello, my name is Alfrancisco Lozano. I'm a resident of Harlingen, Treasure Hills, Mr. Metmore's District, District 3. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the Cameron County Libertarian Party. I'm the Harlingen area coordinator for the Libertarian Party, and I'd like to state that this issue is not about smoking. Smoking is detrimental to your health, and you should not do it. I do not smoke any substances of any type at all. It should not be done. However, this issue is not about smoking. This issue is about freedom. Freedom to be able, for businesses to be able to do what, what they wish to do, what they, how they wish to operate their business. If you do not like smoking, I recommend not going to a business that allows your smoking. I recommend not going to a restaurant that allows you to smoke. If you do wish to smoke, then by all means, go to a restaurant that, or a bar, or whatever you want to define, to go smoke. This issue is about freedom. It's not about smoking. To address a couple of the other speakers, one of the ladies says the sky does not turn, the sky gets bluer. I actually have a degree in physics. The sky, the atmospheric effects of smoking are negligible. The sky does not turn more blue. To address another speaker here about electronic cigarettes, this law is actually slanderous. Electronic cigarettes do not involve tobacco whatsoever. They are nicotine vapor. They do not provide smoke whatsoever. I can go into the physical details thereof, but of course, I don't wish to bore the commission. And the other speakers, I just noticed a lot of children in the audience wearing the, we choke on your smoke. You're being lied to. You are not, that is not the truth. You can choose where you want to go, in a free country, which this is, in a free city, which we want it to be. You wanna be able to have your freedom of choice to go to the bars, to the restaurants, to the entertainment venues that you wish to go to.
15 more seconds, okay?
Yes, thank you. Without having to have a legislature legislate what, what it is that you're allowed to or not to do. So, I recommend from a libertarian standpoint, if you wish to get the endorsement for your coming elections for the Libertarian Party of Cameron County, then vote against this bill. If you do not, we will advocate against your continued assault. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
My name's Scott Thomas. I live at 2213 South 24th Street in Harlingen. Many of you know, I, I run DFW Vapor. I had Commissioner Lee Al in the store just on Monday. I applaud a lot of the changes between the first version and the second version. The only problem I have now is that you're forcing people who have made a choice to go be healthier with their e-cigarettes versus regular cigarettes, to go with the smokers. So, they're, you're defeating their entire purpose of choosing a less dangerous alternative. They're gonna have to be in the same spots that the smokers are, having to inhale the secondhand smoke. Including e-cigarettes in this ban is, it's, I understand it in certain areas, certain places. Restaurants, fine. I, I don't wanna be around somebody vaping while I'm eating. Walmart, HEB, places like that, I understand all of that, because it's, that's rude. If you can't smoke there, you shouldn't vape there to begin with. But to force us, vapers, into the same areas as smokers, it's actually defeating the purpose that we switched over. You're, you're defeating our attempts to quit smoking. And that's pretty much the only issue I have with the new, the revised bill, or ordinance. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I think what just transpired-
Please state your name and your residence.
-shows exactly what is going on-
And your residence address.
Harlingen, with the ordinance.
Yeah, state your address.
2410 Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
Let me commence again, then. That's indicative of what just occurred. Someone that may perceive themselves as Hispanic, gay becomes a potted plant. But for Commissioners 1 and 2, who may be more aligned with a certain party, they are permitted to engage in dialogue. That's what the issue has become here. It doesn't have to do with the distinctions between e-cigarettes or not, which the FFA is now going to regulate just as heavily as smoking. The issue is that we're not allowed to conduct our- The issue is that we're not allowed to conduct our own affairs as we choose. We're overregulated in that sense. Well, I'll make, I'll make, uh, obviously, we had a distinction about who the principal speaker is, but again, all I'm trying to indicate to you is, you won't permit a dialogue between the constituents. And I think that defeats some of the liberties that we're trying to show to you. That's all, that's all that we're all trying to show to you, that we wanna have some dialogue with you. When things are a little bit more relaxed, you in fact, do engage in dialogue with speakers up here. Valley Grace Park. In its charter, it meant to be a profit. So, what, just, just one second. When Chino made the point about profit, Tudor could not answer that question. And that's the kind of dialogue y'all failed to engage in. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ray Turner, I live at 1906 Plantation Drive here in Harlingen. Um, just wanted to, I guess, call on, um, the further exploration of the ban of the electronic cigarettes. Um, I've, I travel, um, most of the valley and, and into Corpus and Laredo. And I've talked to people in Corpus just this week about the effects on the sales of tobacco, that the existence of vape shops and vape establishments in Corpus, uh, the, the effects that it has, and, and in fact, it's called for, caused a 30% decrease in the sale of tobacco products at Stripes in the Corpus and greater Corpus area. I think that ultimately, uh, we should probably know more, a little bit more, or I guess, um, explore more the, the effects of these smoke cessation devices before we put it in the ban. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, hello. My name is Aaron Solomon, 2402 North Head Carey Drive. I agree with the smoking ban as far as restaurants go, like Chili's, Applebee's, any family-oriented restaurant, I agree with that. But what I don't agree with is an adult venue. When your business clearly states 21 and over, that's 21 and over. These kids cannot go into establishments like that, it will not harm them. So you're taking the adult right away from them, from going in these businesses that are old enough to choose whether they go into a business that smokes or not. If they go in there and it's smoky, they don't like it, they have the choice to go somewhere else. That's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else? Okay, then we'll, uh, ask if there's anyone that'd like to, uh, well, let's read the caption of the ordinance.
An ordinance in the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending Chapter 92 Health Regulations and Consequences of the Harlingen City Code, providing a safety clause, providing a several building clause, and abiding in other matters relating to foreboding.
Does anyone like to, uh, present the ordinance officially? Is there a motion, or adopt the ordinance officially?
I'd make that motion.
My vote is no.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait, wait, just a minute, Commissioner. Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, is there?
May I make comments? Yeah, ask questions and make comments.
And now, now it's time for discussion. Make a motion in a second. But, but Commissioner Sanchez will start.
My vote is no, for this person. I thought it was gonna be 100% non-smoking on the city of Harlingen. But this gentleman favored some clubs, and that's why I'm upset. I want to be 100% non-smoking on trainings, that's why.
Yeah, I, uh, for those out there who don't know, I have a unique perspective on this. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in nursing, and with my bachelor's degree, I worked in the cardiac care unit in the hills of Tennessee. I don't know how many of you have done CPR, uh, but it's a hell of a loss. Two dozen or so people die under me, uh, doing CPR and ZAP. Uh, I hate to lose, and I hate to lose life. And all those people in the hills of Tennessee smoked cigarettes or used tobacco in one form or another. As a nurse practitioner, I got to intervene with people, read them in the RIDE Act, educate them, and diagnose heart attacks as they were happening. And the common theme was, they were tobacco users. Now, tobacco is the only plant in the world that contains the drug nicotine. The federal government says that nicotine is a legal drug, and that tobacco is a legal product. When I was born in the mid 50s, 75, 80% of America smoked. We're down to about 20%, which means 40 or 50 million smokers out there today. The reason people use nicotine is, is because they're self-medicating. Whether they have an overt mental illness, or they're just self-medicating. Tobacco is a horrible, horrible thing. Whether you snort it up your nose like the ladies in Tennessee did, whether you put your chew in just like Walt Garrison, or you smoke your cigar or cigarette. It causes death and destruction. About 480,000 people a year die from tobacco. I have diff, there are great things in this ordinance, and there are bad things in this ordinance as presented. The, uh, one of the silly things is private clubs, except when used for events held in the facility to which the general public is invited. Uh, people smoke at the Elks Club. I don't go to the Elks Club. I went there earlier this year. The Thursday morning Rotary, Sunburst Rotary had some sort of event there, and I went. And to prohibit smoking on the day that the public is invited is plain silly, because you can take a chisel and chip off the secondhand smoke off the walls, replace tanks. So I come home and I bathe and wash my hair, and all's fine. Nicotine, there have been no medical studies, there are no longitudinal studies on the drug nicotine. There have been thousands of studies on smoking and chewing tobacco. I believe it's wrong to include e-cigarettes in here, because that's not smoking, that's vaporizing. And the e-cigarettes, there are studies coming out now showing that it's a great way to step down from smoking tobacco, which is gonna kill you guaranteed, to e-cigarettes. And then stay on e-cigarettes, or use the patch, or you choose the gum, or then you, you step off and you're nicotine-free. There are no longitudinal studies, I repeat myself, and there's no studies on nicotine or the device of what's properly called e-cigarettes. And so, e-cigarettes should not be regulated, except that, people under 18. Nicotine's not the problem, it's the drug delivery device. That's the problem. And so, as this law is written, I cannot vote for it. People have the right to use a legal substance, and people have the right to gather. I don't want them gathering at my house using that substance. But people have the freedom and the flexibility to do so, and I believe they should be allowed to do so in private clubs of that sort. Yeah?
Okay. Alright. Anybody, any other discussion, questions?
I mean, I, I, a couple of observations on, on the ordinance. Um, my original question a while ago was on that January 1st, 2016 timeframe. I think the initial intent was to make Harlingen a completely smoke-free community. And at that, at that point, I agree with Commissioner Sanchez on that, because that whole thing keeps coming up about fairness. And, uh, I don't, I don't know if we can ever achieve that definition of that, because it affects a lot of different people, and public venues, and places where people go, so I can understand. I, I see the benefits on both sides. I can't say myself that I know enough about the e-cigarettes to give an informed opinion on that. Obviously, Commissioner Metzmore may be more informed and educated in that area. I've heard some opinions voiced about that. If, not to muddle the water anymore, but if we were, if the true intent, as it relates to some of the exemptions that we've had, that we're allowing based on the first draft, is to encourage the two places, which would be private clubs and the Valley Grace Park, to come into compliance at some point. I think we need to make it more of an aggressive, uh, date line. If the true intent is for them to come into compliance, uh, because if we leave it too long, or too big of a window, if that's what the intent is, that may be lost. And it's gonna be harder to revisit that with the same intention, and I think the original intent. That's just one small point in a lot of the language in the ordinance. I think the issue as far as the tobacco smoke, I think that, I'm pretty firm on that. I think I, I agree that, I know, we have to be fair to everybody. I can certainly understand the, the position of, of people who smoke. But at the same time, you have to be fair to the people that don't smoke. And I can understand, I, I heard the argument that, uh, people have a choice not to go into a restaurant or establishment that does allow smoking. Well, my perspective on that is, I think we infringe on the, the right of somebody to want to go somewhere that is smoke-free. So it's sort of, it's a two-way, it cuts both ways there. And at some point, you have to make a decision and take a position on this. And I appreciate everybody's opinion. I think everybody's given a lot of thought, and I can see there's a lot of conviction on both sides of this argument. I, I still have some questions about the ordinance as it's written. I know this would be first reading, I really would like for us to take a good hard look to make sure that we, as long as I have a vote on this commission, that we really, really, not to say that hasn't been a lot of thought and, and sweat put into this, this version right now, I just, my, my question is still on that. I really, honestly, sincerely, I'm still wondering about the e-cigarettes. I don't really know myself. As far as the smoking, the tobacco products, I think I'm pretty clear on my position on that. My only question is on some of these sunset clauses for these establishments. I think it needs to be fair, but aggressive as well, which would require them or create an incentive for them to actually come into compliance. I'm not saying it has to be done immediately, but I think anything over a year's time would be, I think, excessive. And our true intent is to make them come into compliance, because then it would become, in my view, unfair to the other establishments that were wanting to be smoke-free.
Okay, is there a resource out there that can explain the e-cigarette, uh, aspect of the ordinance? Well, I'll let you, this is somebody, I need somebody to explain, an app, an advocate of the ordinance, who can explain technically why e-cigarettes should be... Because you've got two commissioners up here who don't understand why the e-cigarettes are in the ordinance. And you've got, and I need somebody, is there somebody that can address that in a technical way, as to why that's an important, uh, issue? That would be one of the, a professional.
Fair, if you want somebody that's a favor of eliminating the cigarette, or just explain why it's even in the ordinance?
Well, to explain the rationale behind including the e-cigarettes in the non-smoking ordinance, and that would be one of the professional advocates for this.
Okay. I'm starting, I would love to answer any of your questions. I can tell you a little bit about...
Just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Christine Donatello, and I am the Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network.
And you live in?
I'm sorry, I live in Austin, Texas. Sorry about that. Um, some of the studies, the, the first thing I'd like to say is that, um, there is, there is not, there's not a study available that can defend, definitively tell you long-term what e-cigarettes do, because the sheer fact that they have only been around for a short time. The studies that have come out have not been positive. There have been concerns with the propylene glycol that is, uh, in the vapors, and that other people are able to still breathe in that secondhand, you know, vapor. Um, the FDA has recent, recently decided that they are going to put e-cigarettes, um, under the same umbrella as tobacco products. It should be treated the same as tobacco products. The e-cigarettes, where I, I hear a lot of people talk about, it helped me, uh, to quit smoking. And that's great, but it's not a healthy, you know, when they say get healthy, it's not healthy. And there's the, a bigger concern, and I'm glad that y'all are addressing the age limit, because that is a problem, and it's a problem all over Texas. But the problem is that this is also a vehicle for, for young children. They have flavors such as cotton candy, gummy bear, um, you know, and it, it starts them on it, and, and a lot of them eventually move from these cigarettes to actual cigarettes. But as far as some of the studies that have been out, there's been, uh, several studies that have been done through, um, one, his name's Dr. Wong, and he's actually, uh, over the Travis County Health Department, but he used to be part of the CDC. And he has been able to, um, every study that's been provided, uh, for instance, like the Drexel study that has been provided with some of the e-cigarette companies, um, has been able to prove that it was not, the study was not credible, and that it was also funded by this organization that, um, is, you know, sells e-cigarettes and for e-cigarettes. The studies that have been done now have clearly stated that this is not a healthy product. Uh, it is not a tobacco cessation product. Whenever the e-cigarette industry was talking to the FDA about, uh, not being under their thumb, they said, "We are not a, a cessation program." The problem with that is then they come to their local cities, and they say that they are, to try to get, um, so that they're exempt. Um, we think that because there's so much more to be discussed, that we should err on the side of caution before we just say, "Okay, we exempt." I'm sure a lot of you remember, a long time ago, people had no idea that smoking was bad. And now we've come a long way, and we know that it, it kills hundreds of thousands of people. And so, let's not repeat history, you know, let's learn from our past. This is, it is not a healthy, um, alternative. And I, I'd be more inclined to answer any questions.
Now, I'll make some comments to you. I mentioned propylene glycol, that's just a large sugar molecule. There, it, there is, uh, there makes no sense for anybody to suck anything into their lungs except air. Uh, there's psilocyphus, pneumonocotiosis, and all other things, and asbestosis, when people were exposed to certain substances. Certainly, e, e-cigarettes are not healthy. But there's no secondhand smoke, there's no danger to the public, there's danger to the individual. So I have a question, and there's no answer to this yet. So most bladder cancers occur in tobacco smokers. So is it the breakdown of nicotine to protein that causes, that hangs around in the bladder that causes the bladder cancer? Or is it, or is it any of the other 4,000 organic molecules that are burned and consumed that cause the bladder cancer? I don't know, nobody knows. So maybe in 10 or 20 years from now, we'll find out e-cigarettes cause bladder cancer in individuals. I'm gonna guess that's a probability, but I don't know. But it poses no danger to other people. It poses danger only to the individual using the product, or theoretical danger to the person using the product. The smoking ban is just because we know secondhand smoke is dangerous to people. I grew up in this small town, everybody smoked, we had no choice. When you breathe, you breathe in a ton of pollution. We were all too back in days smokers, okay? We had no choice. But it comes down to, e-cigarettes may be dangerous, probably are dangerous, but they're only dangerous to the individual. And it's a legal substance, and the FDA will be regulating it. The FDA uses science and they use politics. And just because they're regulating it, doesn't mean it's, it's going to kill people. It might.
Okay, um, since I gave, yeah, now, I'm gonna, I would call on, like, the smoke shop guy, the, the, if somebody who works in that business, if you wanna come and, and respond to her, uh, her explanation.
Well, she's, uh, she's partially right. There's not a lot of studies done on e-cigarettes that are positive, but that's because most of them were funded by people who don't want e-cigarettes. Uh, the Drexel report, as, as she said, found not credible. Actually, the Bursting report was not funded by anybody other... report was not funded by anybody other than the Drexel University, and it was peer-reviewed and found credible. E-cigarettes, propylene glycol is in everything. It's in everything. It's everything from sterilizing sprays to foods you eat, Dr. Pepper, everything. The vegetable glycerin that's in the e-cigarette is basically just thick water. All the flavorings that are used, which by the way, adults like candy flavors too. I'm a fat guy, I know. They're all FDA-approved. And nicotine, while, while, Mr. Mesmer, you were, you were great on the nicotine, it is found naturally in other plants as well. Tomatoes, asparagus, a few other places. Tobacco's not the only source. Granted, most nicotine is derived from tobacco plants, because it's more abundant than tobacco plant, but it isn't the only plant that contains it. And, and you're right, there's no secondhand danger. There's been several studies that show on the exhale, there is no, you might get a lingering smell of something fruity or whatever flavor they're vaping on at the time. I like mint. A lot of people smell mint when I'm around. But as far as danger to the public, it's no more dangerous than having a boiling pot of water in your house to the bystanders. The only danger is to the person ingesting, if there is at all any danger involved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say that, you know, when Victor and I sort of agreed to meet with staff, because this issue was brought up, neither one of us brought this up. And so, we wanted to work with staff after staff presented the first proposal to us, because we thought there were some things that could be improved on it. 2014 is the 50th anniversary of the Surgeon General's Report on Tobacco. We don't need to sit here and have a debate about whether tobacco kills people or not. We don't need to have a debate about secondhand smoke killing people. Everybody knows that. The e-cigarette part of it comes into, I don't know whether e-cigarettes are safe or not either. I do know, however, that if you blow vapor out, and I walk through that vapor, and the vapor has nicotine in it, I'm not exactly sure how that's any different than smoke to me, because I'm inhaling the nicotine. The e-cigarettes are also scented, or have flavors to them that some people might find offensive. The other problem gets to be from, which hasn't happened yet, but which will happen, and by the way, there are plenty of cities in the state of Texas and around the country that have done the same thing that we're talking about doing with e-cigarettes. We didn't just look at all of this in a vacuum, we looked at other places. There's a cartridge in it, in an e-cigarette, that contains, you can get it with 25% nicotine, 50% nicotine, no nicotine, you can get it any way you want, strong, weak, whatever. Probably, if you're in Colorado, you can get it with THC in it. And so, nobody's going to know, when you're vaping, what it is you're vaping, unless they are the ones that put it in there. The other thing that we ran into is, is it's pretty confusing for people that are sitting in a bar, when someone, they see someone across the way, inhale on an e-cigarette, the tip glows, whether it's blue or red, or whatever it does, they glow different colors, and then they exhale smoke. That's a little bit confusing. So, we're not trying to, we, I understand the benefits of an e-cigarette as opposed to smoking. That's a good thing. Nicorette gum is a good thing. Anything that stops you from inhaling the smoke is a good thing. So, if you want to use that as a transitional thing in your home, in your car, outside, walking around on the sidewalk, that's great. We're, I'm very happy for you. But the problem is, is the things that I listed, it's confusing to other people that are in the bar. We don't know what you're vaping on, and that will get to be a problem, probably very quickly. People will be concerned about what exactly is in that e-cigarette cartridge, because technology moves pretty quickly in that area. And so, that's why, you know, we looked at all of these things. It didn't just happen in sort of a vacuum. And personally, the way I sort of came around to this, and the way a lot of people come around to it is, is when you're looking at it, it's very confusing about the pub, the rights of the smokers versus the rights of the other people. And basically, what it boils down to is that when you start to look at it as strictly a public health issue, we've got employees, and I'm sure we can get affidavits from every employee that works in every bar, that will say that they don't mind smoke. But there are people that work in bars, that that's the only job they can get. And so, that's where they end up being in there, and they would prefer, I've had people tell me, they would prefer to be in an environment where there is no smoke, but they need, you know, they have to stay there and work. So for me personally, it's strictly a public health issue, and what we're trying to do is, I would love to have come forward with, "We're going to stop smoking everywhere." That would have been perfectly fine with me. However, Victor and I received multiple calls. We've both been to the racetrack, we've both been to bars, we've, you know, we kind of worked this thing around to try, to try to figure out how we could get to the goal line in a certain amount of time, whether it's 2016, 18 months, or six months, we can all figure that out. Whether it's tomorrow, that's fine with me, we're just going to talk about it. But that's, that's the process that went into this, is you have lots of input from both sides coming into us and the staff. And so, you know, every, you know, compromise is what, or, I can remember Kika Delagara, who used to be a congressman from down here, he said, "Legislation is the art of the possible." And that's sort of where we are here. Nobody's super happy about any of this, but that's sort of, we're trying to get to a point in the future where we will be smoke-free.
Just stop. Don't do any more.
All right.
Stop.
Hey, you're out of words. Thank you.
Mayor, may I, may I rest?
Yes.
First of all, I spoke with somebody recently. They said, "Would you tell that you're very, you're agonizing over this?" I have to admit, I kind of favor the libertarians, where it's, you know, we have freedoms. But I have one thing written down here, when we talk about freedom. How about the freedom of the worker who has no choice?
Where's the worker?
Let me think.
You're out of word, and if you continue to address without being recognized, I'll ask you to, I'll ask you to leave.
Okay. How about the right of the worker, because it is a work environment. There are people, the only job that they can, that they're good at, or be working at, is in a bar or in an establishment where there is smoke. And so, I have to agonize over that. That's the part that I had the hardest heart with. Once reconciled to that, the rest of it was kind of easy. Most municipalities, I did a lot of research, most municipalities that adopted a smoke-free environment, the bar business actually got better. The only thing that I could find where there was problems was in the gambling casinos, because people spend more time in them. But ultimately, when we spoke to the race park in Corpus Christi, their business got better. Now, what happened in Corpus is the racetrack closed when it was allowed to smoke, and then Corpus went smoke-free, and when the new park opened, or reopened with the new owners, it was just easier for them to say, "We're just going to stay smoke-free." Their sales are wonderful. They're still in business today. So, with all that being said, if you're going to come at this from an economic standpoint, banning smoking in the bars puts everybody on the same playing field in the city of Palmetto. The only reason we even addressed the race park was because they are currently a smoking establishment, and they are different from a bar. But when you take that away, and you look at what their business is, they're basically a bar that allows gambling. Okay? So, that's the reason we put the sunset clause in. Gave them an opportunity to get up to gear and be able to do something. E-cigarettes, I, you know, I went out and visited the vapor store on Monday, and I got educated a little bit. The questions that I have, nobody's been able to tell me what the transfer rate is. You inhale it, does 100% of the nicotine stay in your lungs, or does some of it come out through the natural progression? You eat garlic, I guarantee you, in about three days, everybody's going to know you're eating garlic, because it comes out of the pores in your bloodstream. But that's part of our human body. The nicotine's going to come out somewhere. If I had to make a choice today, I would probably say we need to look at it very carefully in a bar situation, because my concern today is, I was in a food establishment here in this city, sitting next to somebody that all of a sudden grabbed their e-cigarette and started puffing on it. And that was very, very troubling to me. Me eating in a restaurant, and somebody sitting next to me vaping. And when I've talked to people who do vape, they've kind of sided with me. They said, "You know, we should respect areas where other people are at." Now, somebody said something about a bar, everybody's an adult, I'm going to go back to that first statement that I said. There are people who work in those bars, and they put up with it, because it's the only place they can get a job. Okay? And so, I think they have a right, and we should respect that right. That's just my opinion. You know, what, you know, I think, what you said about Kika Delagara, you know, it's very difficult, because we can't please both sides, but we need to compromise at some point. Secondhand smoke kills. Period, paragraph. It's been proven. And I think to err on the side of banning cigarettes in this city, it'd be very easy for me to do that. The vaping from day one, I've always, I mean, you've heard me vacillate on this issue. I've had a very difficult time with that. I noticed CBS decided to eliminate all tobacco products in all of their drugstores. And you're going to start seeing that on the tobacco side. So, with the last of it is, I got educated that people are buying e-cigarettes and buying it with zero nicotine. And I don't know if it's psychological, why they have to have it, I don't know if it's a fad, but I am concerned about standing next to somebody, and you and I've talked about this, and all of a sudden, that puff goes up. And like I said, when I spoke to other people who vaped, they tell me, "Yeah, that is troubling. We should not be exposing children to that habit." And so, where I kind of vacillate on it is, what you said about vaping outside where everybody is smoking, rather than another area, you know, do we need three areas for people to be? I don't know. I don't have the answer to that. I wish we had more research. The research I have here says there's 40 studies in which there is no effect from vaping. But then, all of a sudden, last week, they, somebody's talking about taking THC synthesizer and making it to an oil. Don't know. I don't know. You know, I agree with the two of you. I really do. I think it's, but I think there's, there's still research that needs to be done. My concern is that people see you with it, and it's a child, and all of a sudden, it becomes a toy, something cool. And that's the reason I push so hard to take e-cigarettes and say, "If we're going to sell them, you've got to make sure you're 18." If you get caught with it and you're not 18, there has to be a penalty for that, because somebody sold them that e-cigarette, or provided it. But as far as an adult vaping, Mr. Mesmar said it the best. You know, what I put into my body is what I decide to put into my body. The question I don't have is, when that comes out of my breath, where does it go? So, I'm done. I'm done.
All right. The, this is not about, we're not eliminating tobacco sales, we're not eliminating e-cigarette sales in the city of Palmetto. We're not, if you want to smoke, you can still smoke. If you want to vape, you can still vape. Issue here, and it's not about, and it's not about, we've already eliminated, the existing ordinance has already eliminated smoking in probably 85% of venues. The question now remains, is the rest of the, the rest of the population and employees. And when the American Cancer Association, Cancer Society came to me and presented the reasons why we should go the rest of the way, I did put this on the agenda, because I am concerned about people who don't have a choice about where they might work, or where, or how they might be affected by secondhand smoke, because they have to be in that particular location. You know, we have lots, we have lots of regulations on, we have lots of regulations. Commissioner Mesmar, you can't play your stereo so loud that it affects somebody next door. Police will come out there and tell you to turn it down. If we have a business that operates, a business that is a public nuisance, and they affect the property owner next door, where they can't use and enjoy their property, there are regulations, and there are private actions that could take against those businesses. This is the same thing. This is, if you do something that affects the person next to you, and that person is passive about it and can't do anything about it, then you're invading, and you're causing them potential health problems, or invading their space, including vaping, which we don't know what, we don't know what that does. So, I truly believe that the majority of this community wants to see this ordinance passed. I've had enough people come up to me and tell me that this is the right thing to do. I've had more emails than I've ever gotten about any other subject since I've been here, which is down a long time. And so, I truly believe that the community would like to see us move in this direction. I agree with Commissioner Castillo. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see this quicker. And if we could pass it tonight, maybe on second reading, we could, we could pull that back in at least six months. He said, "If there was no magic to it, it was just an arbitrary day, you know, maybe let's give them a year, let's give them nine months." We can talk about that. But I'm sure if the commission passes the ordinance tonight, it's a step in the right direction. I think it's a step that the community at large wants to see. We respect those who, you know, have different opinions, but we also live in, you know, in an issue for the majority rules. So, does anyone else have any other discussion among the commission?
Do you, yes, table this and go back to the visuals and then?
Well, we have a motion, and we have a second. And so, we have that. So, we're going to have to call, we're going to have to call the question. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. The motion carries. The ordinance is passed on first reading. Thank you very much. Going to go on to the next item, which is item nine, consider take action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Palmetto to enter into an interloper of the operational agreement with the city of Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, for grant, by the Department of Justice, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant program of 2014.
I believe Mike is going to make that presentation. There he is.
Mayor, commissioners, this is an annual grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. We usually get some portion of it every year, and basically, it's money provided to us by the grant. Sorry, sir.
Is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I make the motion. I'll say.
Most in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If the votes are signed, I'll carry it. Out of 10, consider take action to approve the city manager's recommendation to reappoint the municipal presiding judge for the city of Palmetto for a two-year term.
Mayor, commission, the city manager places it on the agenda. He has recommended that the city council reappoint current municipal presiding judge, Robert Gadda, for his two-year term.
Is this at the same rate that?
At the current, at the current rate of that.
Judge Gadda is a former United States managing judge. He's overqualified for this position. We are extremely lucky to have him. I mean, you know, since he's taken over, since he's taken over as the presiding judge of the city court, I never, I don't hear any-
At least not too much, I hope, anyway.
I don't hear much of anything bad.
The city manager's very happy with-
I've had to work with the judge over the past years. I strongly endorse him. He's been a very stabilizing influence in the municipal court, and I have nothing but positive things to say.
Is there a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation?
I'll make the motion if we approve the-
I'll make the motion if we approve the recommendation of extending his term for two years.
Suck it.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Judge, thank you.
Thank you very much again, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right. Back to the other team. Item 11, board appointments.
I'm done.
Item 12, citizens communication.
Wait, I think Chino has to do it.
I think, this, for the... I can work for you, I mean, for the...
Can we, can we leave it open?
Yeah, yeah, right. Can I make the floor? Okay, can I make the floor? I think I got open one on the museum, too. Have we got the name of that?
Yeah, let me just check.
Nothing like putting you on the spot, right?
Yeah, because we need to, we need to put it out there.
The museum?
Yeah.
We can do this on Wednesday, can we not?
Joe.
Yeah, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you give me the name of that?
I believe that you're thinking of Adam Saldivar, he is the CFO for Suplínica familiar.
But I don't have, are you...
It was on my paper.
I don't think it's up yet, because I don't have it listed, I don't have his word listed on your list.
Okay, why don't we put board appointments on the special meeting for next week, figure it out, that way you're appointed on Wednesday, if we can get it figured out, if we need to do that. That's it. Last item, citizens communication.
I have none, Mayor, the council has lined up all these...
Okay, very good, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned, thank you for your time tonight.